...legal action, of course, that happened in closed session, so that part has been dealt with. We do have a number of public speakers, and at this time, what is the number of requests?
We now have sixty-nine.
All right, we have sixty-nine speakers. We will move that to one minute apiece. And, Ms. Steele, if you would mind, if you would like to see this item out?
I just want to say thank you that this item came up, and I raise the issue because government's first duty is public safety.
Yes.
And Orange County since January that SB fifty-four was implemented, that our show actually released the criminal illegals, about hundred seventy-two people on the streets. This resolution is really needed. I just want to say thank you to Vice President Nelson, that he added the ten more press releases regarding the legal act that we're going to add in. So, I'm going to just make use of, you know, use to the comment about that.
All right, and just so everyone's clear, the federal government has filed a lawsuit on this issue. It's in the eastern district of California, it was in the San Joaquin Valley, I believe it's filed in Fresno. My recommended action, which we directed now counsel to get involved in, is really to participate in the lawsuit. There are cities that are sort of going their own and sort of opting out, which to some degree creates the same problem we're complaining about, which puts our officers in a position to try and figure out, you know, which law enforcement officers they can and can't communicate with. So, hopefully, the temporary restraining order the federal government, Department of Justice is seeking is granted.
Okay.
But, in the meantime, we have this resolution before us. We have a lot of speakers, so for the next hour or plus, why don't we welcome the speakers forward? And, folks, you are all important. You truly are. Try and be cognizant, you know, if you are given time to go over, everyone expects the same, and suddenly, we're in a bit of a predicament, as it looks like I'm being unfair. So, I don't mean to cut anyone off, but at one minute, would you just finish your sentence, if you could, and we'll move on from there. Madam Clerk, why don't you call the first five speakers out?
Judge Thompson, Sheena Lappas, Cheryl Martinez, Greg Siska, and Stella Stevens.
Sheena Lappas.
Oh, shoot.
I find it absolutely shameful that we're talking about a group of individuals who are hardworking, who actually pay their taxes, who contribute to our economy. For just a reference, in terms of who we're talking about, let me tell you a story about an individual who I know, who actually is working for slave wages, who can't report the fact that she is being exploited by her boss, because she has been told by multiple individuals that if she reports it to the police, she will be deported. So, we're talking about public safety? This is absolutely nonsense. What's, how we protect public safety is allowing immigrants to be able to report crimes that happened to them, to the police, without the threat that if they report it, they will be deported. So, that's all I've got to say. This is absolutely shameful. I oppose this resolution, and I guarantee you'll be hearing from other people who will say the exact same thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thanks for staying with us one day. The opposite. Thank you for assisting in helping the government. I know it's a challenge, as if this is some sort of performance art. It isn't. I can't stop you from clapping, but I assure you, everyone that's excited is going to hear something you don't like, and then it becomes a competition. We're all adults. I know you're, none of you are used to hearing things you don't like to hear, but we've gotten very used to it, so, you know, give it your best. Welcome.
Hi. Sorry, I'm not really good at this. My name's Cheryl. I want to thank you for letting us have this chance to speak. When I respect, respectfully say that I'm very concerned for the safety and civility of our community if we don't stand with the rest of California. I believe that this will not make us any safer, but will put us at much greater risk. The police are trained to investigate crimes and to keep the peace. We can't have people afraid to go to the police if they're harmed or witness a crime. I've been a social worker since the late eighties, the very late eighties, and I've met with many people, heard their stories, which are all different and complex. I've seen a lot of ugly things on the social media, and I realize not everyone sees this the same way. The conversations have become very mean-spirited with bullying and intimidation. People talk about illegal, AKA undocumented, being criminals, when statistically and actually legally, they're not considered criminals. Let's not jump on this bully bandwagon. Please don't endanger our community by forcing the police to do something they weren't trained to do, that's not within their scope.
Thank you very much.
And that will do more.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Yeah, there apparently is some confusion. AB one oh-three and SB fifty-four deal with incarcerated persons, so they may be making a report on their way out of the jail, but these are not people on the street, these are people already in the jail. So, if there's some confusion on that, perhaps maybe there won't be going forward. That's not a question, I'm just telling you. All right, next speaker, please.
I'm just concerned about those out of me.
Next speaker, please.
Sheena Lappas, Greg Siska.
Stella, go, Stella.
Stella Stevens.
Go, Missy.
Yeah.
I'm Harris, a representative of the concerned citizens of California, thousands of which live in Orange County, and we collectively ask you to vote yes to support the resolution on this item, S fourteen A. We also are asking you to direct county council to take legal action in the form of an amicus brief or a jointure letter with the DOJ's recent lawsuit that was filed up North. For the media and others here today, let me remind you that aiding and abetting illegal aliens is a felony under eight USC thirteen twenty-four, and further, that section two-seventy-four of the INA also lists felonies pertinent to illegals. And lastly, the correct terminology is not immigrant, the rather illegal alien, as defined in numerous US codified laws. The correct use of immigrant is one who has gone through or who is in the process of trying to legally become a US citizen.
Yes.
And anything else is rubbish. Thank you for writing this resolution, and thank you for voting yes.
All right.
This is in our Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next five speakers.
Next five speakers, we'd like to have the podium Curtis Franklin, Thomas Fielder, Patrice Lyons, Robert Laughton, and Rafael Solerzano.
That's the guy who attacked me.
Hi, I'm Curtis Franklin, I'm a resident of Huntington Beach, a lifelong resident in Orange County. I'm speaking here today to urge you to vote no on S fourteen A and continue extending state-granted protections to all of the residents of Orange County. Due to illegal technicalities, certain immigrants are denied their basic civil rights. They are not able to seek justice when they are the victims of crime, they are not able to seek restitution when their wages are stolen, they are not able to vote, and many are imprisoned without being charged with the crime. Perhaps it is their inability to vote for the board supervisors that contributes to the ease at which their needs are dismissed. We are all lying to ourselves about our commitment to the ideals of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness if we allow ICE officers to snatch our fellow residents off the street, jail them in secret facilities, refuse them communication with their families, and deny them their rights to counsel. ICE's policies and procedures are not currently illegal, but they are certainly immoral. If we truly prescribe to our supposed American ideals, we should find the conduct of ICE deplorable, and local law enforcement should remain forbidden to collaborate with them. These sanctuary protections provided by the state of California protect the sanctity of families by encumbering ICE's efforts to break up the family units towards which conservatives pay so much lip service.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks.
Boo!
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I've lived here in California fifty years, and I've seen it go from golden state to total lawlessness. With SB fifty-four, what we have is we have illegal alien criminals being released onto the street. That's what we're talking about today, and that's what you're opposing. And I am here to thank you, Michelle Steele, for writing this, and Sean Nelson for advocating, and I encourage all of you to vote yes. And I just also want to thank you for any legal action that you're going to take. Thank you, and protect our public safety. Thank you very much.
Yeah! All right.
Robert Laughton, I'm urging you to vote yes on fourteen A. Public safety requires immigration and custom enforcement to be in the jails, so that when the, so when the illegal alien commits a serious crime, and he goes through the judicial process, he gets a trial, and if he's convicted, then he serves a sentence, and then when he gets out of jail, there should be an ICE agent there to start the deportation. If the illegal alien doesn't want to be deported, if he doesn't want to meet the Iceman, then don't commit the serious felonies. That will draw your attention to the immigration and customs enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next five speakers are Arthur Shopper, Pat Chavannick, Josh Fredik, Jordan Quiber, and Morgan Dindig.
My name is Arthur Shopper. I am a lifelong United States citizen and resident of the state of California, and it's about time that we had more bodies like this one standing up to the lawlessness of the California State Legislature. We fought a battle over nullification a hundred and fifty years ago. Those losers lost, and the ghosts of their ancestors are back here trying again. Sanctuary states are lawless and racist. They must be ended at all costs. I urge you not only to file an amicus brief, but to show support and provide funding to Los Alamos in their fight against this lawless sanctuary state policy. And I want everybody to see on this shirt is Marcello Bizzarello, a Santa Ana resident who was killed by a five-time deportee illegal alien. Where are his dreams? Didn't his life matter? Steps like this will ensure that American lives will matter once again, that we will restore the rule of law, and we will put an end to this lawlessness. And for the record, if you're in this country illegally, you're not an immigrant, you're an illegal alien.
Come on forward.
Hi, I'm Pat Chavannick. Thank you very much for bringing this matter to everybody's attention, I appreciate it. Our federal laws allows for legal method of entering the United States of America. Because our nation is so great and so large, we have millions of people here illegally. Some are quietly living, but some are breaking other laws and endangering the lives of those that were born here and interlegally. For the past many years, many of people have said that should have been deported and were, that they keep coming back, not a good thing. When President Trump announced that ICE would be working tirelessly to deport these lawbreakers, many cities, and now our state of California, decided to go into the sanctuary status. By doing so, as an invitation has been made for illegals to swarm to California for their own safety, but in doing so, my safety is affected. A few years ago, I was in a car accident with an illegal alien who rear-ended me. No problems physically. She had no license, no insurance, the car was borrowed, she tried to walk away from the scene of the accident. The police officer who came had to tell me I got to do a citizen's arrest.
Thank you for your comments.
Wow. That's terrible. Such lawlessness.
As you know, my name is Thomas Fielder, and I am a resident of Anaheim. And the intersection between homelessness and our draconian immigration laws.
Oh, poor brother.
Is just going to result in more homelessness in this county. And I am in favor of resisting the deportation of people who have lived here for sometimes thirty or forty years, who have children, who are US citizens, spouses who are US citizens. This is insane. We have even deported veterans who have fought for us overseas. That's insane. So, please stop it.
Thank you.
Boo! Boo! Americans first.
Next five speakers are Robin Biston, Raul Rodriguez, Betty Robinson, Lori Masonas, and Chanel Temple.
Oh, wow, we got so many people on our side.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Robin Biston, and I am with We the People Rising and the Remembrance Project, and we are just here to endorse and thank you for writing this resolution. This is an issue of public safety. As was stated, the focus is criminal aliens that are in custody. It is not safe for our state when these individuals are allowed to be returned to our communities. So, thank you. We hope that what you're doing here today will be replicated in other communities, other counties, and other municipalities.
Thank you.
Yeah!
My name is Raul Rodriguez Jr. I'm the California Coordinator for America First Latinos, and we have a Constitution. This only applies to legal citizens. It does not apply to those who are in this country illegally.
That's right.
Therefore, if you're in this country and you're illegal, it's time to self-deport.
Yes.
You don't belong here unless you get in line and become a legal citizen. That's the truth, and that's the law. Nobody is above the law, not even presidents, not even governors, not even judges, not even you four up there, or three.
Get out here, Todd.
It was four. Anyway.
Get out here, Todd.
That's the point I'm trying to make, is that nobody is above the law. Look what happened to Clinton.
Yeah.
And he was a big lawbreaker.
Thank you, sir.
Blowjob.
Anyway, it's still green, though it was. Anyway, thank you for wanting to speak, and thank you for coming up with this resolution, and please vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Deport all illegals! Lock them up! There'll be some over there.
Good morning, welcome. Excuse me, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Betty Robinson. I was born in California and have been a resident in Tustin for about twenty years. Last week, I sent an email to Supervisor Steele thanking her for comments she made during a television interview in which she expressed her opposition to SB fifty-four. Sanctuary cities attract illegal aliens who know they're safe from deportation there. As proof of this, we all know about the horrific, now infamous murder of Kate Steinle by a five-times-deported, seven-times-convicted illegal alien criminal. And Kate's family is forever separated from her. Tragic but preventable stories like this one have been repeated too many times to count.
Yep.
There were some brave legislators in Sacramento who stood up and opposed SB fifty-four. One of them was former Orange County Supervisor, now State Senator Pat Bates. God damn it, I can't tell you what she did. Anyway.
We know what she did. You told her she stood up. Thank you.
Yes, she did.
Yes, she did. We need you to stand up.
I support your resolution.
Thank you.
Yeah! Yes, yes!
Hello, good afternoon, everyone up there. My name's Lori Masonas. I'm here to say I do support your resolution. I do support Attorney General Jeff Sessions' motion against California. I am opposed to SB fifty-four because it is illegal.
Yep.
I was here earlier when heated a discussion of homeless people. It touched my heart, because it's everywhere. It's an eyesore, it breaks everybody's heart, and I believe there are more people with soft hearts than you want to believe. But anyways, my point is, California is, has a deficit of twenty-three billion dollars, primarily because of the issue of illegal aliens living in our state, taking in our wonderful government assistance programs. Why don't we use that money for our homeless people, homeless individuals?
Yes! Yeah!
And, like I said, I support your resolution. Thank you so much.
All right! Yes!
Chanel Temple, the next five speakers are Pat Davis, Harin Uzil, Kim Sargent, Kim Cattist, and Darren Barakris.
You got this. You got it. Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. I'm a black in a sanctuary state. I don't have to sit there and explain and go through how the black community has been devastated by racist, illegal immigrations. Blacks are constantly under attack, blacks have been kicked off their jobs. We're a part of this country, we help build this country. I want to thank you. Thank you for taking a stand. And speaking of homeless, ninety percent of the people downtown LA are blacks, and they're American citizens, and this is unfair. In America, you're going to pay, you're going to pay for what we're going through, okay? And also, we have nowhere to run. We have no America to run to. I can't even run to the police, they're being shot and killed by illegal immigrants. This state has turned into a lawless state, and it has to stop.
Yep.
I hope you guys make history today, take a stand, and represent all Americans.
Yeah!
Hi, Pat Davis back on another issue. I certainly am encouraging you to vote no on fourteen A. I'm a little concerned what came out of the closed session, but I wanted to bring my grandchildren today. Spring break, I thought a civics lesson, wouldn't that be exciting? The homeless thing worried me a little bit, this worries me more.
Really?
Their friends get stopped, they wear certain looks, and they're accosted, and it's most troubling. This continues to add to that hate I'm beside myself with some of the things here. I've been in police stations when I show up, because I do legal duty in the National Lawyers Guild. There have been numerous questions about the police practices when they do show up. I think the compromising of our community's safety is, without question, a more important place to focus. There are plenty of so-called citizens that you could certainly do your arrests, and if ICE can't discover the problems with better police work, and they need to count on local agencies to expose people, that's pretty sad. Most of the arrests I've been there for, as they were leaving the door, the arrest was not a big one.
They don't know.
Good afternoon, my name is Harin Uzil. I am with Los Angeles County for Trump, Latinos for Trump, and Make California Greater In Inc., leading the Jewish Coalition. I gotta add, I am a California native, I am also of Spanish, Mexican, indigenous, and Jewish descent. I want to thank you, Ms. Steele, for your leadership in this issue in regards to your anti-sanctuary resolution. I am representing thousands of Americans across the country, literally, and what we want to say is that we support you, we encourage you, and we will hold you accountable. As we know, we're not brainwashed, we're smart, us common sense people, that it's not about race, and it's not about immigration, but it's about safety and the law. We encourage you and we'll hold you accountable to protect us Americans like myself. I represent also the Latino legal community and American Latinos all across our country, the majority. We ask you to protect us. These illegal aliens have no rights in my house, in our house. They don't like it here, they can go. And the people that are anti-American, that are for them, are great big Americans.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Americans first.
Yeah!
My name is Kim Sargent, homeowner in Huntington Beach. This is our house, this is the United States of America. You guys did the application this morning, in the name of our Lord. I want to remind you of your stewardship. As a leader of this community, you have a sacred stewardship. I have a stewardship before me. I have to be concerned with my family, my community, and my nation. That's the responsibility that God put in my hands. You have a responsibility as well. The stewardship is in place in your hands to take care of this country, take care of Americans first, and take care of us. I've been the victim of crimes from illegal aliens in two thousand, and my ribs broken by people from El Salvador, here illegally. They also stabbed me. In two thousand and nine, my lip was bloodied at my place of work by an illegal alien that was here taking psychiatric care from our citizens, here illegally, a dreamer, okay? Here's the thing, guys, you have a stewardship, your responsibility to us. You have to stop the hate. Stop the hate of our borders, stop the hate of our laws, and stop the hate of our Constitution and our country. That's what you have to do. That's your responsibility to us, all right?
Thank you, brother.
Yeah!
Hello, Darren Barakris. I echo something that Pat Davis said, that this is quite alarming, the rhetoric going on right now.
Oh, poor brother.
The administration has long supported the growth and dynamism of the US economy.
Legal.
Immigrants and refugees are entrepreneurs, job creators, taxpayers, and consumers. They add trillions of dollars to the US's domestic product.
No, they haven't.
And their economic opportunity will only increase in the coming years as America's largest generation retires, spurring labor demand. Increased immigration enforcement, as well as potential restrictions, will impose fiscal costs on taxpayers to prevent immigrants, their families, and their communities. Stepping up detentions and deportation will not only cost taxpayers billions of dollars, but also break apart families. Immigrants are less likely to commit crimes or be incarcerated in US foreign populations. A two thousand seventeen study by the Cato Institute found that the two thousand fourteen incarceration rate for immigrants, both authorized and unauthorized, ages eighteen to fifty-four, was considerably lower.
No, it wasn't. That's not true. The numbers are fudged. Boo! The numbers are fudged. It's not true, they're not reporting. Menti Rosa.
Next five speakers are Jesse, Ivan, Mike McCoy, Genevieve Peters, and Sky Waggoner.
And for the record, the crime rate for the incarcerated population is much higher than the citizens walking the streets.
That's right.
Thank you! Yeah! Preach it.
Twenty-five Americans are killed a day. Thirteen of them are done by drunk drivers of illegal aliens. Since nine eleven, sixty-three thousand Americans have been killed. Sixty-three thousand. That's no joke, and the numbers don't lie. Governor Brown should be arrested for harboring illegal alien subjects.
Yes! Lock them up.
Lock him up. Lock them all up. Are we a nation of laws, or we're not? Do we follow the Constitution, or do we not? They need to be arrested, and they need to be held accountable.
Hey, Hal, how are you?
The numbers don't lie. Arrest them.
Yeah! Perp walks.
I oppose SB five-four. Right here, I have in my hand a copy of the Constitution. I call it my owner's manual. It says here that the immigration is to be handled by the federal government, by the Constitution, I mean by the Congress, not by Sacramento. Jerry Brown is operating completely outside of his authority.
Yep.
I commend you people very much, and I oppose this for the safety of our people. And there's one word that everybody keeps forgetting, it's illegal. You're illegal alien, or you're a legal immigrant.
That's it.
Yeah!
Yes, do it legally. Get in line. You're all set, Swartindi, you did it. You did it, Swartindi.
My name is Sky, and I'm from Huntington Beach. If you saw earlier this morning, there were young individuals, probably students like myself, asking to promote public safety by protecting them. S fourteen A is asking to condemn state law that endangers public safety. However, sanctuary cities promote safety by allowing undocumented, please let me speak, allowing undocumented immigrants, especially students, to work with law enforcement when crime needs to be reported. I'm a student at California State University of Long Beach and take classes at OCC and Golden West College. I have seen firsthand how the treatment of DACA students is not only frightening for them, but severely affecting their mental health. Now, can you please let me speak? Now, you want them to not only continue to be fearful about being in flux, but become targets of violence for those who know their status? You want them to make our communities less safe by putting fear in the hearts of undocumented to not come forward when there is a crime? It is not their fault our government refuses to fix DACA, and until then, OCC needs to continue to be a sanctuary. If you vote no on fourteen A, you are responsible for endangering human beings.
Boo! Boo! What about Marcello's dreams? What about Marcello?
If you wouldn't mind, we've already had one volunteer remove himself. Sir, we get it, it's charged. Try to just be respectful, all of you. I know that sort of it's lost in this conversation, but to my understanding, the least safe city in the United States is Chicago. Google the status of Chicago, and maybe that'll help you understand how safe a community is or isn't with sanctuary city status.
Yep.
Perhaps the statistics matter to someone.
They matter to me.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Genevieve Peters, founder and executive director for Family America Project. First of all, I am coming here with joy in my heart. We have wind at our back. For once, California cities are understanding that they took an oath to obey the Constitution of the United States, and that means something.
Yeah!
We thank you. Thank you, Michelle Steele, Supervisor Steele. Thank you, Supervisor Nelson, because we have, here's a bit of statistics for you. Over half of the illegal population is in California. And, oh, surprise, surprise, over half the homeless problem is in California. Let's put two and two together here.
Yes.
There is an issue. We need to secure our borders, we need to put the people in Sacramento that keep getting elected out on the street, like the homeless are out, and like the people and their policies continue to break down the spirits of California citizens. Thank you for your leadership.
Yeah!
Next five speakers are Doris, Tomi Selig, Ward Nelson, Jose Servin, Eric Garcia, and Joseph Moreno. Joseph Moreno.
Oh, the brainwash 13-year-old.
Good afternoon, I'm Doris Matasilovic. I've lived in Orange for the last 50 many years. I don't see why we're even having an issue with this. It shouldn't be an issue. Oh gosh. It's my understanding that precedent has been set in the state of Arizona under the Obama administration that the federal government is in charge of immigration. We cannot have all the states with different immigration laws.
Yep.
It just doesn't make sense. Also, our constitutional republic depends on following the rule of law.
Yes.
When we no longer do this, we will lose our system of government. If laws are not working, then there's ways to change them, but we can't just ignore them without falling into chaos. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Good afternoon. This proposition is a dangerous joke. I understand your need for political capital during election season, Steele and Nelson Supervisors, but the support and money you're getting from FAIR, the Federation for Anti-immigrant Rhetoric, which is what it should be called, is a slippery slope. SB 54 is not sanctuary. It's very far from the sanctuary that we need. ICE is still separating families, is still detaining children for years. They're still harassing and sexually abusing women in detention. And they're still running an operation that targets any immigrant for profit, any, any. SB 54 is a Band-Aid, but it's completely legal and necessary.
No, it's not.
Peace and security as well as housing are all human rights. And the 10 people here that disagree with it, they're scared because they're scared of becoming the very same minorities they want to oppress.
Oh.
I feel your pain. I feel your pain. As a minority myself, I understand what it's like to be oppressed and mistreated. SB 54 can go away, right? And here's how. You uphold the Constitution you so dearly hold by calling up the ICE agents and their xenophobic and racist agenda targeting everybody.
All right, thank you.
Boo. Racist. That's racist.
Good afternoon.
Lori, that was funny.
First, I'd like to start by addressing the gentleman and then saying that Stephen Clark's life mattered too. And our issue is much greater at the level that we're posing. This is absolutely anti-immigrant. It absolutely is white supremacy.
White supremacy, really?
To your point, nobody is above the law. Let's talk to the officers who shot Stephen Clark down. Let's talk to them. If nobody is above the law...